Yes, I have your attention please for the following order. This is the City Council of Canton Council's Work Session, December the 6th, 2012. If you would please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the end of the day.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, please watch over all that are not here tonight. Watch over this congregation that is here to discuss very important matters of the city. As we enter this Christmas season, I ask that everyone remember the real meaning of Christmas. It's about giving and not about getting anything back. It's about giving all you have, just like you did, your son, Jesus Christ, that came to save us all. Please keep everyone in our city in good health. Help them to be appreciative for the things that they have. We ask your guidance on issues that come before us tonight. Please help us to make the right decisions in order to move our city forward, to help us be the best place to live, work, and play, a place where we love our neighbors and willingly want to help each other, a place where we give freely, expect nothing back. All these things, I pray.
I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. Before we consider the approval, to approve the agenda, I have a couple of changes I wanted to make in the agenda from your information on those of you that have the agenda in hand at the council here. The first item is I would like to, I would move the approval of November the 15th, 2012, Council Meeting Minutes to just after the public input period since we do approve the minutes anyway. Before the, before every, every meeting, we at least approve the minutes, so there's really no need for those minutes to be on the consent agenda at the next item, next meeting. The other item I would like, I would like to move item number 8E, Discussion of Couth and Decorum, to Old Business, item 7A. Mr. Mayor, if you'd like to request that these be changed, and I certainly would grant that, even though I may disagree that it's to do our own business, it's not worth arguing about, to be honest with you, so I think I would like to move that if that's where, and that is where I understand you would like that to be. Other than that, I will entertain a motion to consider a properly attended.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to also make a motion that we remove from the agenda, the item that I have under New Business, 8A, Discussion of Fire Service Delivery Methodologies. I'd like to hold that until we have full council. The other thing I'd like to do is add to Old Business, Discussion of Amendment to Charter Section 235F for discussion purposes only.
Where's that?
That's the motion.
Item, that'd be under Old Business, item under Old Business. 7F, which will end up being 7F because, right, right. We move 8E, 8E is being moved to become 7A, okay? So then 7D, C, D, E, and F would be the charter that, correct. Any other, any other items?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to add the discussion of the pedestrian lights that have been turned off, to be turned back on, and that would, I suppose, under Old Business, but yeah, maybe that's a, this would be a revisitation of that.
I think that would be okay, it hasn't been that long since we did, probably less than a year, we did discuss that, and the council at that point agreed to leave those lights that were off, off, okay? So, so we will add, that will be item 7G.
And I'm not clear, the, what, my second request was just that the city clerk read the motion that was made last time toward the charter change, and I wasn't sure if that's what Mr. Mayor was talking about or not.
I think when we get to it, there may not be a significant amount of discussion, but the purpose that I'm doing is that a charter change, rather than getting the council into a possible conflict on the charter change, I believe that the charter change requires a meeting with the first vote, which we've already had, a meeting-to discussion period, which is not on this agenda, and there's sort of a conflict because we've done a public advertisement, therefore it should be available at this meeting for discussion, and then the next meeting, it should be then a second vote. And what I'm just trying to do is to clarify, the reason I'm putting it on there is for the purposes that we don't, we do, that we follow the, what I construed to be the proper protocol for moving that charter amendment forward, for those that want to move it forward.
That's exactly what I'll do.
Okay, and I'm sure that all comes to light in further discussion when we get through that item. Okay, anything else? I entertain a motion to consider approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Sure. Those in favor, see if I can say aye. Aye, on a opposed note, all members voting for the motion. All right, before we begin our 10-minute public input, I would just like to make a few comments here that, certainly glad to see everyone here that is, that's here tonight. I would like to certainly welcome you to this, this is your house, this is your city hall, and we appreciate you being there. It is with your input that we, as your representatives, should be, should make our decisions. I, as any elected official should do, have always based my decisions on the belief that my authority comes from the citizens, that's you. I combine a heavy measure of your input, comments, criticisms, and ideas with my personal judgment and experience when I make decisions. I and the council are here because you put us here, and I am always mindful of that fact. I was told many years ago, as an elected official, during some controversial crisis that I was immersed in, that if you can't stand the heat, get out of the kitchen. That was, that was an editorial in the Tribune, believe it or not, and, you know, I had to take some careful deliberation deciding what I wanted to do, get out of the kitchen or take the heat. I decided to stay in the kitchen, and I did so because I knew that taking heat comes with a job. We have criticism, that's, that's part of, that's part of being here, part of being an elected official. So I urge you to bring your ideas, your criticisms, your comments, because we as elected officials are, or should be, a reflection of your participation in our city government and of all your input. So I do appreciate, once again, you being here tonight. Now, with regard to our public input period, let me sort of lay a few ground rules here. We really welcome your input, and we are here to listen to you. The public input period is not a dialogue, a conversation between the public and the council. It is a monologue. We're here to listen to you, not to answer questions, all the questions that you have at this time. It's not, we're not going to be getting into a discussion on any comments. We will listen, we will hear you. We will not be responding to your comments at this time, but believe me, your comments have an impact and will be considered in any future decisions. I would ask that you refrain from any outbursts of applause or jeers, even though I admit sometimes we, we deserve some of that, mostly jeers, I suspect, and that you remain respectful of your council chambers, and try to avoid any unnecessary or distracting conversation during the meeting. I do have a hammer, and I know how to use it. And if these guidelines are not adhered to, I will use it. So, so help us have an orderly meeting, and we, we, once again, will be listening to your input, and we appreciate you being here. Okay, we will begin our 10-minute public input period. Pat Gold.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Mr. Wood. I appreciate you allowing me to speak. My name is Pat Gold, I live on Main Street in Canton. I wanted to speak to you tonight because I am disheartened. I am disheartened because I had to choose from among a number of serious issues about which to speak. I made a choice of one tonight, but in all probability, I will return to this podium before long because I love the city and I care about her issues. Several years ago, it became clear that the city charter needed updating. Council members spoke repeatedly about a needed review, which never occurred. Ultimately, a committee of citizens was appointed and began the work of reviewing the charter themselves. It was my honor to serve as a member of that committee and as one of its chairs. During our review, committee members and council members alike questioned several issues, including the mayor's staff. Some council members have publicly stated that quote-unquote, "They never liked the mayor having a staff." If they felt so strongly about it, the review process was the time to push for a change. All the questions put to us were answered, compromises were reached, and as far as we knew, the satisfaction of all parties was attained. I say this because after 18 months of research, review, and dedicated work, we presented our findings and recommendations to you, the council. Those recommendations were unanimously approved by council with the exception of one member who was absent from that meeting. That was just seven months ago. What exactly has changed since then? It would seem that a sneak attack has been in the making. That's my opinion. I believe that your intention to do away with the mayor's staff is personal, not a cost-cutting measure. The cost-cutting reasoning does not hold water because any savings that would be achieved were proposed to be allocated elsewhere within five minutes of the motion to dismantle staff. You speak of the office of mayor being a part-time position. The job of council member is a part-time position, yet again and again, I have heard you all say that it is a time-consuming, almost overpowering job. Take your time-consuming position, triple it, and you will approach some of the time the mayor of the city spends on the needs and concerns of her citizens, regardless of who sits in that chair. This part-time mayor does a full-time job with the help of an administrative assistant who knows when to, when a call should be made, whom to call, and how to get things done when she needs to. The citizens of Canton appear to trust their mayor. At least that would seem logical considering the overwhelming mandate given him when elected for his first term, and the fact that he ran unopposed for his second term. The mayor and I do not always agree, he'll be the first to tell you that, and I'm sure that is a remark voiced by others, but I know I can trust this mayor. He will be upfront with me, and he will listen to me. That is what we hired him with our votes to do. In addition to the administrative assistant, the director of the Main Street program falls under the mayor's staff. Mayor Hogg got proposed, lobbied for, and worked hard to bring the Main Street program to Canton. The Main Street program has the support of our local business owners and the interest of our citizens. Unfortunately, it still does not enjoy the support of our city council, but that's another issue I will in all likelihood speak about again if others don't address it this evening. The Main Street director, while considered a part of the mayor's staff, answers to a board of directors. All programs and all projects developed by the Main Street program are created and implemented by the board of directors. I would like to applaud my friend Jack Fincher, who presented a great analogy when we discussed this issue. He said, and I will remind, I'm sure he might bring this up himself, the legislative branch of our city government, i.e. five of our councilmen, have attempted to strip the executive branch, the mayor, of the authority granted to the office. This is more important than the individuals involved. The mayor of the city of Canton, according to the city's charter, is the chief executive officer of the city. Does our council intend to change that also? I firmly believe that the intention of the five is to change the charter they affirmed bit by bit until it no longer is the document they voted to uphold less than a year ago. I am reminded of a quote that fits the situation perfectly, and I direct it to you, our esteemed city council members. Nearly all men can stand adversity, but if you want to test a man's character, give him power. Abraham Lincoln. Just as a side note, I also serve on Canton Tourism, and on behalf of Canton Tourism Incorporated, we want to applaud David Kenjimi for the passion he shows each and every day for the city of Canton. Whether you like the new Christmas decorations or not, you cannot fault his intent to brighten Christmas for the citizens of Canton. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Pat. Stephen Lewitt?
Oh, I'll need to speak to that, thank you.
Okay. John Rust?
Well, Rust follows Bull, I guess, and we worked on the charter together, by the way, it was a great experience. Mr. Mayor, city council members, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak here today. My name is John Rust. I live in the River Green subdivision of Canton, Georgia. My direct subject is the Christmas holiday lights and indirectly the public participation guidelines. I have heard indirectly a lot of negative comments about the lights. I have read neither the Facebook blogs nor the published exchanges about them, but prefer to make my own decisions. I like them, and will not find fault with the size, quality, delivery before the vote sequence, and ordering them down without other organizations, downtown organizations' input. Like everything in life, they are a little less than perfect, but they are here for your enjoyment and not your disparagement. The spirit and meaning of this most important holiday should not be lost because of bickering over such a trivial issue. Several months ago, the city manager reported that the existing lights were in such bad shape that they could not be installed for this year, and new lights would cost $30,000. Thank you, city council, for finding the money. Thank you Scott Wood, David Kenjimi, Chief Floyd, for getting these lights ordered and installed. The wreath in front of city hall looks magnificent and is truly befitting of our great city, our great city. Thank you for acting quickly and decisively. On December 26th, they would be of little value. I would also like to thank and compliment the city staff for making the inside of this building so beautiful. It is important to note that the Christmas holiday lights subject was not on tonight's agenda. If it had taken me a little longer tonight than an allotted five-minute period without prior permission, I doubt that the council would object to my praise of their behavior and cut me off before I finished. And in, and the entire, if the entire audience wished to applaud my speech praising your behavior, I doubt that any councilman would ask the sergeant-at-arms to escort them out. Remember that throughout history, stifling the electoral votes, our voices, has never been a good idea, but wait, waiting for two to four years to vote is sometimes too long for many of them, and this is a fact and not a threat. That's another thing, and guidelines don't threaten me, I'm not threatening, I'm just stating a fact. I want to thank you again for allowing me to speak, want to wish you all Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Holidays, and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you. Jay Sorrow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council, special guests, and citizens. As I look out, Mr. Mayor, I see how, and see how many of people's, of Canton citizens are before the city council today, I am overwhelmed with excitement. I see overwhelmed because for so long, the most important component of our republic, of our democratic process, has been missing. It's people, the voters, the ones each council member will answer to in each election, and they are here now with a renewed sense of urgency. I'm an armed forces veteran, a college graduate, a citizen of Canton, but more, more specifically, I am, like many of you, I am deeply alarmed on the state of our city. For far too long, we have allowed many members of the council to vote against Canton, to vote against Canton's businesses, and against the deep desire to truly move Canton forward. I'm here today to proclaim that the will of the people will prevail. We are here, we're watching, and we will take each decision with the highest level of scrutiny. You see, for over a year, many members have voted to take powers away from our mayor, engaged in questionable backroom deals, and have failed to take action on ethical inquiries regarding certain city leadership. And now today, before each of you, is a resolution. It's the Couth 7, uh, 7E, I think, the Couth or Decorum. It's a resolution that will further limit our ability to hold our council members accountable and demand a, demand for a transparent process. Maybe this is because they don't get it, or maybe, maybe this is because they don't care, but we do, I do, and voting to restrict what citizens are allowed to talk about during open debate will only further erode our democracy and further lead us down this tyrannistic highway. Voting for this resolution will define where each member stands on ensuring that our citizens have a voice, and that voice is heard. I have personally emailed two council members and never once received a response. I should be allowed to come here to this session and at this time to ask why, and to hold each of you accountable to the very people who elected to have you here. Perhaps your givendang is busted, but surely you want to encourage citizens to speak up, to be heard, and to participate in the process. By passing this resolution, you will choose, you will choose to attempt to silence the citizens. I want to thank those of you here today who are speaking up, holding true to the values that bind us together, and declaring that the will of the people will prevail. To the other, we must ensure a comprehensive approach to the problems of today and the challenges of tomorrow is pragmatic, transparent, and moves Canton in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Faris Yon?
Mr. Mayor, council, I thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Faris Yon. Many of you know me, I own Yon's books on Main Street. I am a graduate of Cherokee High School, I have lived in this wonderful city for well over 30 years. I was not born here, but I feel like this is my home, and I care deeply about it and its citizens. I seldom comment publicly on political issues, but in this case, I feel I have no choice. I do not appreciate some members of this council trying to score political points at the expense of people that have worked tirelessly for years to move, improve Main Street, and have made great headway. Imagine what we could have done with this council working with us. As a member of the Main Street Program Board, I have been constantly saddened by the set council's consistent decisions to talk the talk and not walk the walk when it comes to revitalizing downtown. You have often held up Billy Peppers and the Woodstock program as an example of what should be done, yet you completely miss or ignore the fact that they succeed in great part because the Woodstock council funds their programs. They have money and staff, as in more than one person, to attract businesses and plan programs and events to make their downtown into a destination for shoppers. In addition, they appear to have the complete sort, support of the council, since we never hear any published criticism or sarcasm. Billy Peppers has certainly not been subjected to public scorn, mockery, and personal attacks like our Main Street director has. I feel that Ginger Rod Gerard deserves a public apology from some of you. As a merchant, I can assure you that having ginger standing by the road while I'm trying results in at least double our daily sales on farmer's market days. At least this merchant's, and I feel confident in several others. Some of you may be unaware that both Canton and Woodstock began the process of joining the Main Street program at around the same time, and they were certified within two weeks of each other. of each other. The success enjoyed by Woodstock could have been and should have been Canton's, but it takes all of us pulling in the same direction for that success. My one prayer for this council is that you guys will start working with the Main Street Board and Director in making downtown Canton a place that people want to visit and shop. What merchants need from the council is to work together for an even better Canton. I believe the current path, by any reasonable standard, is the wrong path. I also feel that this new effort curtail the public's ability to address this council is the wrong path. I feel strongly that the right to speak openly and freely to this body is an important right as a citizen of this city. Efforts to limit this ability, I feel, will only serve to further erode the already damaged faith and trust we have in this council. Everything related to the city's business done inside or outside of this hall needs to be done with the utmost courtesy and respect. Respect cuts both ways. I urge you to reconsider this idea. Thank you very much.
Lisa?
You're at, it's me, you're at.
Good. Yeah, thank you.
I am, my name is Lisa Mirad, and I'm a resident of Canton, and I live in Hickory Flat. I'll get used to this here. My background actually is commercial real estate, and for the past ten years, I've worked in commercial real estate and high-rise office leasing, Class A. I've helped lease over 700,000 square feet of office retail in downtown Atlanta across from the Hyatt Regency. My experience downtown taught me an awful lot about cooperation, working with the city, working with development groups, working with business owners, retailers, the education sector, and I see what is possible. I've been a part of that. I've worked with the stakeholders. I actually participated in the effort to stop the exodus from downtown Atlanta to Midtown and Atlantic Station when all the law firms were running out of downtown Atlanta because of the homeless, and because of this, and because of that. They were running to Atlantic Station and Midtown because there was a plan, and because it was clean, and because there were amenities, and there was a vision. And so those people flew and moved their businesses to Midtown to pay higher rents just so they could be where the activity and where the business was. I see that opportunity existing here for Canton. I'm wondering, though, what is taking so long? I'd like to be able to continue my commercial real estate business up here. I actually left it about a year and a half ago. I moved from downtown, doing leasing downtown, to working in Woodstock and Town Lake, and then I eventually was recruited by Tommy Clay, some of you may know, with Keller Williams, and I was his partner for about a year and a half. And really, the only thing for me up here was industrial, and I'm sorry, but that just wasn't my forte. I was much more interested in trying to bring businesses and tenants and retailers to Canton, but there was no support base. There's no plan. Where is the plan? Where's the beef? Right? So here's an idea that I would just like to share with all of you. When I drive through downtown Canton, I think, what is the possibility for this city? What would happen if I drove down North Street and, you know, came back up and, hey, the retail section wasn't chopped in half by the multi-moth of the parole office building? Function, consistency. There's no consistent function for this downtown area, but it's possible to have it with a few changes. So I'm going to cut my speech short here just to outline what I see as the possible, and I'm going to take the example of the parole office building. That building, imagine if it were converted into a performing arts and business conference center. What would that do for downtown if you changed that one piece of real estate? Is it reaching its highest and best use? Is it getting the highest dollar value it could possibly get as a parole office building? I think not. What if it were the performing, you know, performing arts and conference center, where you've got people coming in to see performances? You've got school groups, you've got the cheerleading groups come in here to do their competitions. And then on the top floors, you've got business groups coming in for meetings and conferences. What does that do? That brings people downtown. That brings in people to patron the restaurants, buy the retail, maybe stop and use the dry cleaners, or, you know, get their shoes fixed, you know, or get a piece of jewelry for someone before they leave town. It starts with one item, and it is overwhelming when you look at what's going on with downtown. It's overwhelming, and I always say, well, there's just no money. That's amazing. There's no money because there's no vision. So if you can put two things together, vision and legacy, what do you want Canton to be? And then what is the legacy that you want to leave behind? Suddenly, in sort of to come clear, and then you get to assessment, and you look at what exists? What exists here, and how can we make some tweaks for a two-year plan, a five-year plan, a ten-year plan? And how can we bring everybody together? The Tourism Board, the Development Authority, the City Council, the building owners, the building owners need to be involved in this, and the vendors. If everybody works together for a vision and a legacy, I guarantee you that strategic plan of how to get there is going to come together, and the public is going to buy into it, and the businesses are going to buy into it, and, you know, money starts flowing. Not easily, it's not easy, but I was witness to that. I actually worked on a team with thirty competing commercial real estate agents in downtown Atlanta with Central Atlanta Progress, which was the equivalent of what Main Street is, okay? And we thirty commercial real estate agents were brought together by the development group, and we were told that we needed to actually go after a certain kind of tenant. We need to go after a range of tenants. We could no longer count on the law firms. We could no longer count on the big accounting firms. Those were gone. So who do we focus on to bring the downtown? They told us to focus on midsize engineering firms, midsize accounting firms, design firms, you know, all those type of things, and nonprofits. So we did. All thirty of us together went after those very businesses. That meant we had to work together. That meant the development group put together a package of downtown with a map of downtown, color-coded, for office, retail, restaurant, arts, you know, all of that, personal services, business services. It was all mapped out, color-coded, put in a package, and then all of the buildings that had office space to lease down there, all of their floor plans were put in there. It's a very simple concept. And as a commercial leasing agent for my building, I sent that package off with my own sales package for my building to my prospective tenants that I wanted to come in and lease space. It worked beautifully. That is an example of public-private, you know, effort that really worked well together. So what happened was, we ended up convincing Habitat for Humanity to change their headquarters from Americas to come to our building, which was 270 Peachtree, right across from the Hyatt Regency. And that was a seven-year process, in concert with the development group. We also had Atlanta Magazine come and move into our building. Liz Claiborne opened up a showroom in our office building. Imagine if you took the theater, the Canton Theater, and opened that up to business meetings, business parties. You've got money coming in. So thinking, you know, big, thinking outside the box, putting everybody together for a plan. So that's my question essentially. Where's the vision? Where is the sense of legacy? And where's the plan?
Thank you. John Fitcher?
Mayor Hopgood, Councilman Mr. Woods, Attorney Dyer, citizens and taxpayers of Canton. You know, I've been watching over the past several years at various things happening at our public Canton City Council meetings. Several things have puzzled me and actions of the various council members and the actions collectively at the meetings. Recently, I have heard a lot of mistrust between elected officials and our city government, and I wonder where this mistrust comes from. Each of you, as councilpeople, want to work to do things that your friends and your neighbors appreciate and thank you for. This creates a sort of a customer appreciation, constituent appreciation for each of you. I know I personally appreciate you taking time from your schedules to meet and work on city problems and make decisions on how to allow our city to move forward. Some of you on our council and our city manager may not know much about our Mayor Hopgood. Mr. Hopgood has a very strong government background, having served in government offices of County Tax Commissioner, and later as our single Cherokee County Commissioner for a collective number of elected years of what I believe was around twenty years. Is that right, Gene? I hope each of you individually believe that we are fortunate to have an experienced in government person willing to be our mayor. I have noted that many times you do not seem to listen to or take his various forms of advice that he mentions to you in your meetings. I have noted what he suggests comes from his legal and outcome experiences during his full-time government years, and can save you and the council and the city lots of heartache and expense if you listen to what he says and talk with your constituents and friends before being drawn into making fast decisions, which sometimes may be a very rash decision. If you think you want to talk with your neighbors and friends before voting on an issue, simply table a vote till the next meeting. I think a lot of your constituents, including myself, feel that the council has been operating on a different agenda from our mayor. You know our mayor, as yourself, is elected by people who pay taxes in Canton and live within the city limits. I look at the direction that the city is going in or towards now and wonder why. Why does the city need to do this? Why does the city need to do that? Who is the council listening to that says all of a sudden the city needs to do these Why does the city need to tear down a water treatment plant? Who says that the city needs to do away with a water treatment plant and start over? Perhaps updating somebody's equipment, cleaning up the way it operates would benefit us as well as trying to spend lots of money. Is it because some people think you have to spend lots of dollars to be important? Who does this type of spending benefit? Are you, as a council member, going to brag that you spent thirteen million dollars and you looked after that thirteen million dollar project? Are you, when you finish your service to the city, going to look back and say, while on the council, we completed fourteen projects over four years, and we looked after about and spent eighty-five million dollars getting these projects done? I asked you to think and ask yourself, who would benefit from being able to say these things? The thought occurred to me that this would be good material to put into a resume for somebody seeking a job. I'm convinced that many of you, as councilpersons, are being influenced and encouraged to jump into situations that are not necessary by someone, one, who is not an elected official of the city of Canton. Councilmen, are you trying to build your resume? I think other concerned people in the city have noticed this and would like to see the city operated on a more subtle tone and make achievements without so much uproar. Having meetings with only a few councilmen present without inviting all members of council and the mayor is against the city charter, charter, and very possibly against the law. You know, some nine years ago, Cecil Pruitt was our mayor. He and his staff and councilpeople created and changed a lot of things in our city. Most of these changes created, you're in Pruitt regime, came from thinking that the money to complete various projects would come from impact fees. It would not be any expense to the citizens and taxpayers of Canton. Impact fees, as it turns out, are given back to developers as tax credits, so in a round and about way, the city ends up paying out of the city taxpayers' pocket for these projects. When it was obvious some eight or nine years ago that the city of Canton was in some way, in some very, very lean years, and that impact monies were not going to pay for everything, I and a lot of Canton citizens were very interested in what our tax bill was going to look like. Many of us encouraged Gene Hopgood to run for and become Mayor of Canton because of his education and experience in elected public offices and being observant to people that elected him. We felt like he was a man that could bring us through these tough times. I know each councilman here has ideas that they would like to see done for the city of Canton. I think you, as a group, work together and discuss without moving too swiftly, you can accomplish a lot for our city instead of trying to see who is better or smarter than the next guy. With recent votes at public council meetings, it has become obvious that there has been a consensus prior to open meetings on many of the issues. Certainly on some of these issues, there has not been much, if any, discussion during council meetings prior to voting. Locations where consensuses have been taking place should be open to all the members of council and the mayor, and even more importantly, the public. After all, it is your business. Again, it is their business. Again, I remind you that having meetings with only a few councilmen without inviting all members of the council and mayor is against the city charter. Mr. Bryan has orchestrated a change in city charter of Canton to eliminate two women city employees. He worked hard and diligently for our city, saying his rationale is to save our city money. Who will really benefit from their leaving? Mr. Bryan orchestrated a very negative blow to our downtown development by not allowing the use of taxes collected from rental car companies to fund these projects without a drain on the taxpayers' account. Who will benefit from this? I think this is an attempt to be sure there is a way to ouster the women mentioned because of lack of money. Again, who will benefit from this? If no one is closely watching actions in our city government, could we be setting our city up for paying things we do not need? Who would benefit from this? Council's attempt at eliminating two hard-working women is for what purpose? One of these women has watched and looked into various aspects of the city business without being a nuisance, so our mayor can stay alertly informed of the intricate government happenings. And the other lady has brought our downtown Canton program from nothing, from nothing, to where our city is being respected all over the state. Bill Bryan and all council members, I suggest you not change the city charter to eliminate these women. You know our city manager has managed to get the city into the news media in not so flattering way. Mr. Woods pointedly singled out a citizen and taxpayer of Canton and publicly made fun of her when it was not necessary. Mr. Woods gave one councilman a free hot water heater, and I guessed the money for installing it. Did he use his money or city money? Did he have city employees installing a hot water heater? Mr. Woods, when stopped by a city policeman in his vehicle, was quick to let policeman officer know that he was the city manager of Canton. Mr. Woods ordered Christmas lights without consulting with being involved in projects concerning these lights to see what kind of price deal they were offered or the quantity they thought prudent to purchase. Council members and mayor, excuse me, council members and mayor, people of Canton coming and speaking at this open, public, county meeting, city meeting, are very concerned about our city. We ask you to please act accordingly. Canton needs a separation of powers, a council and a mayor. We need the mayor's office to be the eyes and ears for the council and citizens of this city. Otherwise, we will never know for sure what is going on until perhaps it's too late. Thank you.
Thank you. Neil Brutus? I'm in for it, Mr. Woods.
My name is Bill McGrew. I live at 390 East Marietta Street, Canton, and I'm going to talk about a little different subject. The last council meeting, you voted to save the city a whopping sixty thousand dollars by eliminating a salary. Now reading the fire bond resolution that you want to spend one million dollars for a training facility that will duplicate the state-of-the-art facility the county has already started construction. Even if their tariff is slightly lower, it will still serve the same purpose, and a mine is bigger than yours, is no reason to waste a million dollars. As a matter of fact, the city of Woodstock has already applied to the county to use their facility, and they've been welcomed at a reasonable cost. Eddie Robinson, who is the county chief of fire training, has assured me the city of Canton will be welcomed as well. Why would we deepen our debt?
Thank you. Jack Fincher.
Don't bear with me, it takes me a little longer to get there. Mayor of Canton, my name is Jack Fincher. I, uh, one other source of information that I sent tonight, I don't know that I have a lot to add to this meat to it, but I feel this is an apparent violation of oath of office to honor the Constitution of the United States by failing to realize the separation of legislative, executive, and judicial branches within our city government. Our legislative branch is apparently voted by changing our charter to become a monopoly, and this is not in the best interest of the citizens of Canton. A part-time council has the city manager full-time and his secretary at full-time. We need the checks and balances of the executive branch as the mayor, and as a part-time, he must have an administrative assistant or secretary at full-time. And that's all I want to say about that. Now, shift years entirely to Christmas lights. Beauty is in the eye of the beholder. I've been to the Atlanta Airport, as many of you have, and you look, particularly when you're going down the escalator, and you look and you say, "This is large." The star of the east dropped wise men into town. This is the way the DOT brings people into the downtown area. The first thing they see is the angels heralding their arrival. This is the Lord of Secrets, if you come from the market place. Then we have modernistic stars for it. This is for all mankind. It's not the six-pointed Hebrew star, many old-timey Christmas decorations for sale. This denotes to the wise men coming to Canton the place to find their king, their dreams, their wishes. Of course, this is the downtown Canton area with the Main Street balcony and its opportunities. The placing of decorations is phenomenal. I like this part. But of course, if I was choosing the decorations, I would have been a little more traditional with some of them. This concludes our remarks. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Day.
I should come twice, but I need to, I need to read my, uh, from my computer because being a real smart one about some of the programs, I can get it pre-written inside. And I've been the best steps of maintaining some time constraints. I'd like to read from that if it's all right. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Carol Day. I live at 266 Riverstone Place in the Dallas Riverstone condominiums. I've lived in Canton fourteen years, and I have been interested in what goes on in Canton the entire time I have been here. I am used to working as a public servant for different organizations. I do not get paid. You can't afford me. I spend too much time on that too detail-oriented. But it is important to understand that all jobs do not give the best benefit monetarily. And I'll get my computer. I'm that woman you see with the TV remote trying to open the garage door. And I see better some things without those glasses. I would like to thank the council for the unanimous vote for the charter changes earlier this year. Many worked hard, thoughtfully, and thoroughly on that project. You have a combination of backgrounds and intelligence and resources. Every nerve is adequate as you have other council to do that. You were asked as a council to submit people to be on that committee also, to speak in your behalf, but you did not wish to spend the time yourself. That was not a choice, that was accepted. Judge Pope and Bobby Dyer were consulted on issues that were repetitive and unclear and probably obsolete in today's city affairs. Why were there no council members actively involved in working with the committee during the time it was reviewing? They were invited to name people, so I'm reviewing myself, and I'm sorry. I'm not aware of any being, anyone being deeply concerned about the charter until after they voted in the change. Advice was asked for and listened to by the committee before it was brought before the council. There was adequate time for everyone to share that information. Now it is being addressed as an urgent need to curtail the mayor's involvement on a meaningful level beyond well beyond censure, under the veiled insistence that he has not acted in public's best interest. Some John House don't dictate how citizens speak in public at council meetings, nor do they legislate beyond signing in how a person may speak. The council meetings are recorded and available for review. There is a record for you. There is no need for anyone to provide a written copy of what a person is about to say. As for truth and decorum, our council members have set the stage for some of the antics that they are now offended at. Truth had nothing to do with the council member speaking from the podium during the last meeting or his, and pardon my language, but this was the line of speech he was paid from the podium, his "kiss your ass" statement at the end of his speech. I would not include this excerpt, except that this, these are his works, not mine. Cension over power rather than good works has caused severe and ridiculous dissension among council members. The public voted for youth people, and that included the mayor. We did not vote for the mayor to be castrated. We voted for all of you. For the citizens of Canton and the citizens of Canton. There were a slew of family-wide communications, some of which I got from a council member. But this idea of dissension rather than consensus, consensus does not mean you give up your beliefs. It means you cooperate and come to the best conclusion that is inclusive, not exclusive, of the citizens' best interests. All the time that has been spent looking up information and providing information via the internet to different people to arrange decisions to come before the council that are not openly discussed, and when council people get up and allude to things as we're supposed to understand, all of us don't get the backdoor jokes that you got going on or who you feed that with something. If you've got something to say, say it. Don't allude to it. I don't like the veiledness. I think the public does not like the veiledness. I do know that the public appreciates the openness and the intent to be open, fair, and above-board in how business is conducted. I have come to meetings well beyond self-serving for my neighbors and myself. I had an interest, I had an issue, I brought it forward, I did my research, I asked a lot of questions, I understood the fact that previous administrations had their own way of doing things, and that was not open to public review. And because it was not open to public review, we also did not follow the legislative Georgia documents that are required by the state. And when you go forward to change the charter, as seems to be part of the agenda, understand that to change the power of governance of this city, you have to go to the legislature. You can't just do it from a council vote. It has to vote. You can, there are things that you can do, but you cannot change the actual power of the community and the city by a city council vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandy McGrew.
Council, I'm Sandy McGrew, and I reside in Great Scott. Thank you for hearing me tonight. I would like to address your spending. I'm greatly concerned about your spending decisions. City of Canton has a huge amount of debt, and I feel that our spending needs to be thought about a little bit more and not taken so willy-nilly. The last meeting, I spoke and would like to address some of those issues again. I don't really give a flip about how the decorations look. That's not the issue. In the grand scheme of things, the issue is the thirty thousand dollars that was spent when we are in such a great amount of debt. But I do have a problem with, after I spoke about the decorations costing thirty thousand dollars, and when you came to discuss the decorations, Mr. Bryan thought about it, said maybe we shouldn't spend that money. Mr. Beresford, I believe, leaned over and said, "They're already here." The vote had not yet been taken, and I have a problem with that, with the decorations already being in the building, the expenditure already having occurred without a vote. The second issue I'd like to address is the fifty-one thousand dollars for projector for the art, I'm sorry, for the Canton Theater. I love the theater. I love going there. But at this time, in our huge amount of debt, I'm convinced that this is the wrong way to spend our city dollars. Third, is your choice to hire an architect to renovate the chambers downstairs. These chambers are fine. They're not pretty. I wouldn't want to live here, but I don't mind a meeting twice a month. You have chairs, you have a bathroom, heating and air conditioning. I think that an architect is out of line. I think doing renovations downstairs are out of line. I think you need to rethink the spending. As I understand it, about four hundred thousand dollars to be spent on this, and we all know that once you open up a wall and a ceiling, it's going to escalate. We don't have that kind of money. We're recovering from a debt on the reservoir. This is my house, Mayor Hopgood. You said that early on. My house does not need renovating. It might need a repair. The roof does look a little shabby. I went down there and looked at it. But my house does not need renovating. Repairs are reasonable. And then on the pretense of saving money, you dissolved a person's job. I'm curious, and I know you're not going to answer me, but did you go to this person and ask her to take a reduction in salary to save money? I don't know this, and I know you're not going to answer me because this is a monologue and not a dialogue. But I would have tried to work with that staff member to see if a temporary salary cut could take place before dissolving a person's job on the pretense of saving money. And then by golly gee whiz, didn't you just vote yourself a raise? That just sends the most negative message to your constituents that I can possibly imagine. You dissolve a job to save money, and then you doggone vote yourselves a raise. I'm so proud. Now I read via a social media page that our sewer system needs renovating at duty to the tune of about eight million dollars. In the grand scheme of things, thirty thousand dollars for decorations is not a huge amount of money. Fifty-one thousand dollars for projector is not a huge amount of money when you're looking at a hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of debt for a reservoir, when you're looking for eight to twelve thousand, eight to twelve million dollars for a sewer system renovation fix. Those aren't a lot of dollars when you're talking millions, but they count. They're city dollars. They've come from the taxpayers, and I would like for you to think a little bit more about how you spend our money, make wiser decisions, spend our money smartly, and think about the negative messages that you're sending to the constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. Ed Walsh.
Mayor, board, city manager, citizens. I'm relatively new to Canton. Little background on myself, I live on Academy Street. I'm a disabled veteran. I served fourteen years in Army as a medic, and I was deployed to Iraq and became disabled after that. So I have experienced government. Most of my adult life is in government. So when I moved here, started reading the city charter. I didn't see anything in there about an executive branch that was mentioned earlier. I saw ledgers slated of area, but not of infected area. So that's one thing I'm not quite sure on that being, one of y'all can address later And on the subject of decorum, last meeting was my first one, and to me, it was unacceptable. I've read the charter and heard about 2.90 and 91. The mayor's presiding officer, he has the ability to squash that with his gun. And if not the mayor, a council member can make a point of order, and by a majority vote, that person is out of line or out of order, can be removed. Now, maybe it's my military background, but I've been in many meetings, and last week, last meeting was, to me, didn't look good on the city of Canton. Because there are definitely items in the city charter that give the authority to every one of you to stop that. And I'm sure that puts off a lot of citizens from being here. When you hear the word serpent being yelled at council members that the public elected, to me, that sounds unacceptable. Okay? Will you elect these people? Once the election's over, you're right, mayor. You have the authority. You've been given authority by the public. All these members have been given authority, and now it's your responsibility to do the facts and move the city forward. So we should have less input after in voting. There's public hearings that a council member can call in the charter to air out all these issues. This meeting is your meeting. There's public hearings that a council member can call in the charter to air out all these issues. This meeting is your meeting. We're just here for one. This is a city council meeting. If you guys want to talk amongst yourselves and make your decision, that's fine. But I just feel that strongly that if the public gets out of order, that it should be held as an official meeting. And all of you, for business purposes, I've been in Congress as well, and they're knocking up the heck that. And that kind of put me off. And that's what I'm going to speak on the decorum part, because it is in the city charter. All right, another thing is all this bickering holds up progress. Trying to move forward. If there's... These people are part-time legislators. They have to make decisions outside of this forum. This is where they're here to discuss issues. But they can't discuss issues if it's an unruly environment. So I just have to... So I'm talking about, you know, they want that city charter changed so they can have the ability to talk. They do have the ability to talk. It's just the council member needs to have a public hearing, and they can talk out in the parking lot all they want about the issues, but this meeting is theirs. Downtown looks great, by the way. I think there's a lot of the street skate projects. We have the lights downtown, the red bricks on the sidewalks. Like I said, I'm relatively new to Canton, but to me, it's nice and quaint, and I'm not familiar with the whole history. But from what I see, it seems like it's moving forward. It may not. And I'll just leave it at this. To everybody, you don't have to have respect for the person, but please have respect for the office. And that's all I can say.
Thank you. Stan Pat Tannen.
Mr. Mayor, council members, Mr. Dyer, Mr. Wood, and my fellow citizens. A lot has been said this evening, some of which I agree with and some of which I do not. Therefore, you'll probably be seeing me again at this very public. But this evening, I've come to speak with you regarding two issues. So once again, Mayor and Council, I want to thank you for this opportunity to come before you and share my comments. And as you all may know, my name is Pat Tanner, and I am a lifelong resident of the city of Canton. I come to you this evening regarding the Christmas holiday lights and citizen decorum controversy. I've read the news articles and editorials published on these matters. I have also received input on these matters from our fellow citizens and your constituents. Some citizens like the new decorations, some don't, and some don't care one way or the other. I was told just today by a citizen how beautiful they thought the city's decorations were, and I personally do not have a problem with these decorations, and I have seen most, if not all, of this city's decorations down through the years. It is very disheartening to hear the uproar going on about these decorations. Was this not a matter that was addressed by council in a work session in an open meeting and likewise approved by council in an open meeting before the decorations were purchased? If this was indeed the process, then why was this matter not such a big deal at that time? And why now? Whatever's behind this uproar, whatever you like or dislike about our current decorations, they are up, they are bought, and they are paid for. So please, I implore you, let's move on and get back to the true spirit and reason for Christmas. And it certainly isn't what decorations the city of Canton is displaying. Now to the issue of citizen input and decorum. As a former council member and now a citizen of this great city, I have always valued the opinion of every person, and I will continue to do so. We do not always have to agree, but we do not have to be disagreeable. If we as citizens want to be heard and our opinions considered, then we likewise have to be willing to listen to others with open minds. We as citizens are not always right. This council is not always right in their own opinion. But we all have the right to have an opinion, and we have the right to voice our opinions. However, this is still a democracy, and the majority vote is still the majority vote. No council member should ever feel threatened for voting his or her conviction. No council member or employee of this city should ever feel threatened or be disrespected for doing his or her job. If we as citizens want to be treated with respect, then we must also be respectful. And we have not always... And we have not always been at some of these council meetings. Our city is viewed as being highly dysfunctional, and that is not helpful to our business community or our citizens. If we hope to grow our economic development and attain a thriving downtown, then we all need to learn to work together as a team and be more respectful to one another. As a former member of this council, I know how difficult it can be to make the right decision for the future of our city, especially when facing opposition to the decisions you make. I have not, nor will I always agree with every decision this council makes. This city has over 23,000 citizens with a diverse religious, ethnic, racial, political, social, and economic makeup. However, as long as you as council members... As long as you as council members are doing what you feel are in the best interest of this city and all of its citizens, you are doing what you were elected to do. And you will be held accountable for those decisions as it should be. My prayer for this Christmas season and the new year is that this mayor and this city council will begin working together for the economic growth and development for all of Canton. I am also in prayer that egos, self-serving methodologies, personal attacks, self-grandizing, personal hidden agendas, et cetera, will be left in 2012, and 2013 will bring a renewed commitment to work together as elected officials for the good of Canton and all of its citizens. Much can be achieved and accomplished, yet it does not matter who gets the credit. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, for your service to this city, and I look forward to working with you in 2013.
Okay, that is all we have for public input. I would like to thank you certainly for being here. Now it's up to myself as this council to absorb that which you have presented tonight, and hopefully it will be reflected in the decisions that this body makes in the future. Thank you for being here. All right, we will move on now. Okay, the first item we need to do is to address the approval of the November the 15th, 2012 council minutes. Do you have those in your package? Are there any changes to them? We have a motion to approve the minutes of November 15th meeting. Okay, a motion, seconded, discussion, any changes? Not opposed, favor, signify, say no? Opposed, no? All in favor of the motion? Okay. But the other items under the consent agenda here, basically just one item. Acknowledgement of the FYE 2012 October financials. That is attached to. That is there for your information. Anyone have any questions about those? Okay? Under old business, we have discussion of coof and decorum, Mr. Beresford. I'll move that to item 78.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Just a point of clarification. Because I did ask for that to be moved under old business back in late October... No, excuse me, September, October. I did bring the issue of the coof, decorum, and spoke about it. And at that time, it was unresolved, but I did bring it forward, and I felt like it was still old business. It's the reason I asked for that. Thank you. Now, I want to say that the opening remarks by Mr. Mayor was absolutely right on. I support it 100%, and I hope everybody listens closer. But what I need to say in regards to this issue this evening. First, once again, we have misinformation coming from the mayor's office by jumping the gun and concluding that I was going to bring forward the intentions of closing down, shutting down public input. Totally wrong. I'm talking about decorum. And I support public input. The meeting of the city council is an open meeting, and it's council members to discuss and debate issues. It's important to note the difference. This is not a town hall meeting. This is a council meeting in council chambers. I'm not opposed to the 10-minute public input. I've always supported it. I will continue to do so. To quote the mayor, "The city has appropriate guidelines regarding public input." That again is absolutely right. It's City Code Section 2-91D. At this point in time, the evening hour is sliding by. Anybody interested in looking it up, please do. But it addresses decorum, and it's the responsibility of the mayor to maintain that decorum. We have to have luckily enough, sitting in front of us for the past two, three years, decorum. That's how the council should behave. And we do our best to follow it, although we are human beings, and sometimes we fail. But it is what the mayor should be doing, abide by that, and not his opinion of what is okay. What has happened is that the mayor wanted to divert the issue that I wanted to bring forward tonight, and that was the outburst during council meetings, not public input. Once again, misinformation from the mayor's office, and then the media jumped in on it to the conclusion without check or bounce of what I was going to talk about. And I'm very disappointed in the media, but that's another issue at another time. Back to the issue of the coof and decorum. We have been booed, chastised by the public during council meetings. There is absolutely no reason why we are sitting here in council chambers debating on issues. We hope to be able to cut out the disrespectful clapping, cheering, jeering the council has been enduring. The council has in front of them, as I mentioned, conduct that we need to follow. I would ask respectfully that the public respond to the same. And we appreciate it, again. We sit here diligently listening to your input. We've made notes. We would love to be able to track on every one of these and get back. And if anybody wants to speak to any council member, we know that they're open to hear this issue. It is important that we maintain this decorum. There is no business in the world, no courtroom, no judge that would put up with that type of jeering, noise-making dissatisfaction of our debate as we're having it in council chambers. We should have that same respect. I think it was pointed out that we were elected officials. Now it's time for us, an open debate in front of the public, to discuss it. And we cannot have the outburst by having that disrespectful taking place. Once again, I hate to... And please believe me. Mr. Mayor and I have had excellent relations. We had moments of disagreement, which is fair. But the statement that you say you have no problem, don't see any problem with the public's reaction during the big meeting, during the big problem, to clap for a minute and the meeting go on, and that's not disruptive or even to jeer to a degree. The public has the right to do so. Yes, sir. I agree with you 100%, and that is to be done in a town hall meeting complex, not in council chambers. Please show your leadership as chairman of this governing body, maintain the coof, the decorum the body deserves. I thank you, sir. I thank the council, and I thank the public once again for their input.
Thank you, Mr. Beresford. I do have a couple of comments regarding those comments. You indicated that I had erroneously made the statement that you did not want to restrict public input, but the attachment that was provided, I'm assuming by you or someone with our minutes, says very specifically here that mayor and council aim to provide an informative and professional meeting in a safe and secure environment. In order to achieve this, the following will not be accepted. Item's not on the agenda. Seems to me that that does restrict public input there from talking about anything they want to. But at any rate, I appreciate your comments. I respect your opinion there, and we will move on.
Mr. Mayor, please. I agree with you. The document that you referred to was plagiarized by me, I'm saying this in open public, because it had some excellent points. There is a packet that y'all should have received with additional cities. Riverdale being one of them, that has three pages of how to have decorum.
I assume, Mr. Beresford, you... This is what you wanted since you had talked about City of Canton.
Yes, sir. The topic. Yes, I did. That I got ready. And what is interesting is that makes excellent point. This is an opportunity for debate. I brought it forward for the council to talk about it. Me personally, I drew a line through it, struck it. But I did not have time to sit in the council meeting and just debate this. So I just jumped the gun and responded. That's all. So I think it's fair, and I think it's an opportunity for us to be able to discuss openly these issues. But by no means would I not allow the public to do what they have done tonight in excellent presentations and voice in their opinion.
Mr. Mayor, I too read the attachment, and I had virtually no problem with the attachment. The following exceptions. And it is when you're called upon to speak...
And it is when you're called upon to speak, you're requested to, item number four, where we require to file all written statements along with our documentation with the city clerk. I think that's an unnecessary burden that we place on the citizens. These meetings are recorded, and that should be stricken from the, from the.
Right on.
Decorum. The other item that I think, and I think Mr. Beresford has alluded to it, item's not on the agenda. I think they should be able to speak anything that's on their mind, as long as they adhere to acceptable decorum behavior in doing so.
Absolutely right. You know, just the point.
Excuse me, isn't that interesting?
I'll be, uh, wasn't quite finished, but I'm glad. I will finish, I'm glad that we found something we do agree on. Then I'll be back to you.
One thing I'd like to also mention is that I haven't been on this council, but this is my second term, the fifth year. But when we first started this, there was a 10-minute limit to this, and we've gone an hour and 15 minutes tonight. So I think this council is listening to what you have to say. We're giving our citizens the time to speak, but we're not blocking.
Thank you. You have something else?
Yes, sir. I love it. Do you know why? It proves my point. I'm sure everybody got it. The point being, this is a council chambers with council members sitting here debating. I could have struck those items, but I wanted to hear a debate. I wanted to hear somebody come back and say, "No, you're wrong." And I appreciate it, Mr. Cummings. I know that you and I did not get together in a cave with hoods and candles and debated this before. This happened. This is beautiful. This proves the point. This is exactly what we should be doing, is debating. And I want to say again, Mr. Mayor, thank you for your indulgence.
Mr. Bryant?
Mr. Mayor, I didn't have anything prepared to say on this, but I would like to thank you for doing a much better job this, this week than you did three weeks ago. We're, we're getting there. I, I have read a couple of other cities' requirements for public participation, and I can tell you, we're, we're extremely lenient here. One, one of them, I think it's Woodstock, has, there's a $1,000 fine if anybody's in, out of border in any way, shape, or form. The officer takes your driver's license, writes your ticket, $1,000, you can go to court. Our code calls for the public portion of the meeting to be at the end of the meeting. We're, we're not going by our code, but we all know that, that we just overlook that and all agree that, that that's okay. I, I agree that we should not restrict whatever the subject is. I would request that even the clapping cease. Some of the speakers tonight were, talked about things I was in favor of, but I used to drive a school bus, and I can promise you, it'll, it'll get worse if, if we allow that. Our code, our charter is very clear. There, there's not to be any reaction from the audience. And this is our time up here to, to be observed by the public doing our job, which is hold civil debate amongst ourselves and decisions amongst ourselves. We do, out of practical necessity, have to be from time to time with other members of the council. The laws are clear, and we obey the laws, as long as it is not a quorum meeting, we can do that. Just Tuesday, Mr. Cummings and I sat down and, and talked out a lot of our differences. Mr. Mayor, I've, I've asked you multiple times to sit down with me, just the two of us. Sam Rogers has offered to even let us use this facility and be the moderator. I'm asking you once again to please, let's sit down, and it's not a backroom, secret society deal. That's what elected officials do when they have differences that, that they both want to, to try to air out. So again, thank you for, for, for your efforts and for what you said tonight. I agree with everything, and, and let's, let's continue to do better.
Anyone else? Okay, let's move along with the agenda. I believe the next item is a discussion of recommendation of award for landfill closure.
Yeah, I think we covered that in our briefing letter. If there are any questions, I'll be glad to, glad to entertain them. You will be asked to authorize the mayor to sign a contract for $74,949.49 to no one contracting company for that project.
Anyone have any comments, questions regarding that?
Next council meeting.
Yes, sir. The next item, discussion. Excuse me, if there's no objection, we'll ask that to be placed in on the consent agenda. If there are any follow-up.
Any objection to that?
Any follow-up questions, we'll be glad to entertain them during the week if needed.
Approval of the award of the skated contractor?
Again, we, you actually authorized that contract at a prior meeting formally. You're being asked not authorize the mayor to sign the actual contract document. And again, if there are no questions, we'll place that on the consent agenda for the next meeting also.
City ordinance 2-23A amendment, first reading. Mr. Beresford?
Yes, sir. It was discussed at the previous council meeting. It has been advertised numerous times, referenced this evening, and.
Excuse me, Mr. Beresford, I forget if I should explain. Would you explain that as the salary increase amendment, I believe? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The compensation.
For mayor, council.
Yes, sir. I think everybody received from Councilman Bryant the breakout by the different cities within our geographical area, and I think a point was made about the council voting for themselves a salary increase. This issue is not, this is not the first time this has come up. This has come up before. There's never appropriate time for discussion for council on compensation, but it's got to a point where it needed to be brought forward. And one of the things that the charter committee had major discussions on throughout the period of time, they felt that the city council was being not recognized for their work in compensation. The recommendation was brought forward, I believe, and discussed back and forth on the fact about the retirement package. And if you look at it, they were absolutely right. If you look at the retirement package, that is a golden parachute, and that is very expensive for the city. I think you can tune that up. I have the correct number, so please bear with me. I'm saying it's in excess of $60,000 a year. And what we're talking about for this compensation is 40, uh, $40,000. So in the way of looking at, and this is not immediate, it's the future, but it's a $20,000 savings, and I think it's something we should do. And as, again, it was discussed, we'll vote final for it if the next council meet, if that could be on the consent agenda. I would ask if it is not, if it needs more debate, fine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we need a, a little bit more clarification, considering the conversations earlier during the meeting on what Mr. Beresford was addressing. And the fact that I'm part or chair of the, along with Mr. Cummings on the retirement package, there is a savings there. So for you and the audience to understand, better understand, it's, it's not difficult to understand, but from earlier comments, obviously, it's not totally understood. And that is, when we take away the retirement package and don't touch anything else, then this job that the council and the mayor are doing is for nothing. Zero. Not, except for the mayor, $2,100 for a year for the council, and $3,500 for the mayor. So by moving that money around, for any of you who have any desire to run for one of these positions in the future, we got to have something out there to entice people to want to do this. This, this raise is not going to help any of us that are sitting around this table. It's for the future. So we're not doing this to help us or to line up pockets. We're doing it to help the city, to attract people to want to come in here and serve. I hope that's well understood.
Mr. Mayor? Three items on this particular topic. I would like for Mr. Dyer to prepare for vote at the same time, the amendment on the pension that's going to save us some money, so that we're doing both of these at the same time. So it's very easy to, to vote first the salary increase and sometime later not remove the pension. I think they should be on the same agenda as separate items, and we should vote for them. The second point, if everybody's in agreement with that, the second point is in looking at, again, what Mr. Bryant presented in terms of compensation, there's a disparity, not in the amounts that we have here, but between the mayoral position and the council member position when you look at the other cities. My recommendation, if we're going to proceed with this, would be to lower the council member compensation to 7,200 a year, which would save us eight times six, or $4,800, and raise the mayoral compensation to $12,000, using 2,000. It actually will cost us less money than what's in this proposal. And then the third point, rather than receiving one check at the final at the end of the year, I think the compensation should be paid on a monthly basis. Those would be the three things that I would suggest if we can get a council concurrence with.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask, Mr. Cummings, clarify, kind of, where, what's the logic behind your math?
My math would be is if we're reducing.
What's the logic behind it? I mean, the reduction, I don't have a problem with numbers, I'm just curious.
Well, I'm trying to bring into relationship the compensation to the, of the council member to mayors to be consistent with the compensation in other cities. You'll notice that there's at least a 50 percent difference between mayoral compensation and council member compensation on the other.
Are you using the sum, or are you using one particular city on that list that was supplied?
I just looked in general at all, and some of them are a little bit more, and some are a little less. None of them are only a 25 percent difference that I can see on there.
The lowest percentage difference is 39 percent. That's the lowest of those nine cities that are out there. The average, they run from 39 percent to 111 percent of those nine cities. And I can tell you, you know, I, number one, I couldn't, I can't support the, the salary increase myself. I, I just, I realize the, you know, it's, it's long overdue, but the economy is still in the doldrums, and a lot of people are still suffering, and I think that to give ourselves a raise is just sends the wrong message.
Could I ask, Mr. Mayor? Thinking in the future, if we take away the retirement, what is there, is there in the city for a person to come forward and, and serve?
Well, that's a good question, but I would hope that it would be to do service for his community. And basically, when I, when I ran for this office initially, I didn't know it paid anything. And there was some things I felt like needed to be done. Since that time, I've found they're much more difficult to get done than I thought at the time. But, you know, I didn't, I didn't come here for the money, and if $10,000 is going to attract somebody, I'd be worried about that person. That wouldn't be my candidate, I don't think, if that's what they want, you know what I'm saying? But, but, I mean, this council seems to be in, in, in mood to, to do that. I just, I just say that, you know, I would not, you know, I, I get the $3,000 a year, would say, got tonight, thank you for that payday. So, but, you know, I just, I don't think, I would not accept an additional raise at this time.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Then I ask another question. So we take the $65,000 that we save on the insurance, or the retirement plan, excuse me. How, give me your vision of a better way to spend that.
Fire department.
Okay, thank you.
I know you like that one.
Will you back that up? You will, you will back that up, meaning?
Absolutely.
So if we take that away, we're going to get tuned and firm?
Well, you, of course, I concern, if we take that away, we could shift that over. Of course, that doesn't mean we're saving that money. Of course.
I realize, I realize that, but it's a better use of the money.
It's a better use of the money, and I would absolutely support giving that to our fire department for some special need.
Now, we got, we got other opportunities just like that. The streets department, we lost eight people a few years ago. Am I correct in that?
About a few years ago, probably so.
Yeah. I think it's time they need some help.
Well, we'll find it.
We need, well, we can find it.
Maybe we should take the council salaries and do away with it.
We can find it. In one of the ways, one of the ways that we can better do that is what's before this council right now. It's not a, it's not a happy thing. Reorganization is never, comes out with everybody being pleased. But that's, but, Mr. Mayor, that is, as we discussed in your quarters earlier today, legal, by the way, folks. But that is a better utilization of the money.
I did not say that, and I don't believe that.
No, you didn't say, I said that.
You did say that, I knew I didn't.
You don't, you don't think that's a better utilization?
Absolutely not. Absolutely not. In order to serve the citizens, you know, the mayor, there needs to be a mayor's office in city hall, I think. We don't need to talk about this at this time, because that's on the agenda of another.
I agree. I just, the fault I'm trying to make is, is that if we work through this and do some moving things around a little bit, and, and we use the word savings, it probably is very misleading. I'm saying, we don't need to save, we need to reallocate or redistribute and put the money to better use in better places, and we got many opportunities like that. And that's where we don't have a good vision, Mr. Mayor. And the leadership of this city has to have a vision. We heard that twice tonight, you got it in a letter the other day, and you said, came back to that young man, not a young man, by the way, he was very, he's retired, and said, "Well, if you got a $62 million debt, it's hard to have a vision." That's, that's common. Well, that's what he said to me.
What I said was, if you have $62 million, if you have a, a credit card with no maximum limit on it, and you can charge up all you want to on it, and, and someone else is going to pay the bill, it's easy to have that vision then. I can tell you, it's easy to, to build that vision, but we don't have that.
We need a vision, period.
Mr. Mayor? I think we're on the topic of proposal. A proposal from Mr. Beresford, and I have suggested three things relative to that, the change in the compensation amounts, the payment monthly, and the inclusion at the same time or reduction in the savings. That's what's intended to be on the agenda at the next meeting, and all I'm doing is asking for a concurrence with me on those three points or recommendations.
Mr. Bryant?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to go back to a minute ago when you said that you would have to wonder about a person that would run for this office, that $10,000 didn't make a difference to.
No, it wasn't.
What, what was the difference?
If $10,000 meant a lot to somebody to run for office, that, that would concern me.
Okay, okay.
That's what I was saying. I may have missed.
Well, it occurs to me to look around at, again, at who we are. We're a bunch of old white guys. None of us need the money. We, we've heard about vision tonight, and future, thinking about the future. I bet you everybody up here, when you were 35 years old, with a young wife and young children, making, I don't know, in the equivalent of today's dollars, maybe $30,000 or $40,000 a year, and you felt. or forty thousand dollars a year, and you felt passionately about your city, but you knew it was going to take up anywhere from twenty to fifty hours a week, you're just going to write letters to the editor and maybe come to a meeting every now and then and fuss about it. But if you know that you can earn an additional ten thousand dollars a year to supplement your thirty or forty thousand dollar a year income, you're going to think about running for this and really making a difference. I've, I've had the pleasure in the last few weeks of meeting a lot of young people through a new thing that I just discovered this year called Facebook, and I've met some of them face-to-face in person, live in person. A lot of them violently disagree with me on a national scale, and a lot of them more mildly disagree with some of the decisions I made in the city, but all of them, I have encouraged to be more involved, and I would like to see more people like that run for this office. Whether they disagree or agree with me or not, I don't care, as long as they have the ability to think for themselves and to research the issues through, and to make informed decisions, I think that ten thousand dollars a year is going to make a whale of a difference to a person like that, and that's the kind of people that would need up here. Now, I, I would like to just, I'm going to briefly read a comparison of cities around us, and, and what they pay their elected officials. Woodstock, identical population to Canton, mayor twelve thousand, council nine thousand, and that's the lowest paid on the list. Milton, thirty-three thousand population, the mayor makes twenty-three K, the council thirteen K. Kennesaw, even smaller than Milton, the mayor makes nineteen, council twelve thousand. Acworth, smaller than Canton, twenty-two thousand population, the mayor makes twenty thousand a year, the council makes twelve thousand. It goes on. Marietta, eighteen and thirteen, Sandy Springs, twenty-five and twelve, Roswell, thirty-eight and eighteen, Johns Creek, twenty-five and fifteen, Alpharetta, thirty and fifteen. Again, Woodstock is the lowest one I could find, and the proposal that we have on the table is even lower than that.
Mr. Bassett?
Thank you. Mr. Rush brought this up, and he brought forward the proposal for ten thousand, eight thousand, and we heard it, and then we said, "Just advertise it, let's get it out here." We bring it back again this evening for discussion, and I agree with Mr. Cummins on two points. One, I think that we should link together, the retirement fund dropping off at the same time we bring on the increase. The other one is monthly, whatever compensation, that's fine, I don't care. But the other one, I think we should stay with what we originally talked about, is ten and the eight. Let's move on with that, it's never a pleasant issue to discuss, and it is below what is in our neighborhood with others, trying to do the same thing that we're trying to do here, and by no means will we be able to get rich or anything else. And it is funded by the fact that we are going to make this very important change with that retirement package. That is big bucks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bassett. Anyone else have any comments on that?
I would like to respond to what Brian said there, and I, and I do agree to, to a great extent with what you said. Nevertheless, I do believe there are those out there who have that ten thousand, young, young folks as well. I was thirty years old, I left the job making fourteen thousand five hundred dollars a year. To take a job in public service for fourteen thousand five hundred a year, I actually took the risk to run for that office after resigning for the same salary. If I had not been elected, I would have had a job, but I wanted, I wanted to be, I wanted to perform as a public service in that respect. And so, obviously, it wasn't money for me at that time, I guess it never has been, maybe it should be. I know, I think Ellie would wish she was many times, but it's not always been. But, but I do appreciate your comments on that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Just one other point also, in the good old days, back when you and I were dialoguing quite a bit, and, I think, yeah, I mean, you know, discussing, run for council, and I thought it'd be a great deal, and I decided to do it because I'd served on various committees. I didn't know there was any bucks to be made, so I took the position to be of service, and I'm sure these other colleagues here have done the same. And it, it's not a money situation, it is an opportunity to serve the community. I'm retired, I can be able to do something, keep myself challenged, and I'm excited about it. But when you look around at these others, what the heck? And if we can save the city money by changing this antiquated issue of the retirement, that is major bucks, if I could live to be ninety-five, which I know a lot of people would not hopefully live that long, but if I, I could be well off.
Yeah. Right. Thank you, no one else, okay. Let's, let's move along here. Bond resolution, Mr. Wood?
Again, I think we covered that in your briefing letters, if there are any questions, we'll be, be happy to entertain them. The funding analysis that you see before you anticipate, three new fire stations, one Laurel Canyon area, one Canton Marketplace area, either there or else perhaps down on one forty, and then also Bus Parkway area. The Bus Parkway facility does include an appropriation of a million dollars for a training facility. I just stepped over and asked Mr. Dyer if there would be a problem in reducing that total eight million dollar allocation if that was discovered to be the pleasure of council. Chief Floyd is here, our ISO consultant has been in town the last couple of days, our ISO evaluator was here today, and as soon as this discussion is concluded, I think Chief Floyd is going to step out and go back and meet with our consultant again. But I had to step back a moment ago and ask him if he'd be willing to address the training facility merits, and you could take that into account, if you feel like it should remain as a part of this funding analysis and program, or if you think it should be eliminated.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Could I ask, Mr. Wood, and maybe Chief Floyd better to answer this, something was said, said in the earlier comments, that the county would welcome the city of Canton out at their training center, and I would assume that to be accurate, that, that we could go out there, but does, the ISO does not recognize it at that time?
Yes.
Am I correct?
No, that, I, in fact, just a few days back, maybe a couple of weeks, Mr. Wood and I visited the fire department when the ISO consultant was there, and I actually brought that issue up, and he indicated that it would count if it's within five miles or something of the city limits or something like that, or there's some requirement there, it would have, it would be just as good as we, we helped it ourselves. That's what I understood him to say. So if we could work that out, I think it would essentially work out.
Absolutely. Brian?
I just want to briefly say, I would totally agree with that. If it can be demonstrated, you don't need for us to build a fire tower, don't build it.
Absolutely.
Could, Chief, could you explain why you, what your rationale is behind the city building its own training?
The mayor is correct. If the county's training facility is within five miles and we have access to it from the city limits, which I think is three miles, we will get full ISO credit. The other side of that is, we're looking, and I want to use three miles as a round number, we're looking at, several times a year, we have to do joint training with all of our employees on duty. So we're going to take all of our trucks, and we're going to go three miles out of the city, and we're going to leave the city unprotected. So that means if something happens in the city of Canton, we've got to shut down what we're going to, get everybody back on the trucks and respond back into the city. But that is the downside to you. We're looking at, the actual building we're looking at is actually a little bit smaller than what the county's looking at. It's not a bigger building, it's actually a little bit smaller. We're looking at about a five hundred thousand dollar building, and we're looking at just, we are literally looking at something just to meet the requirements of ISO. The rest of the money is to do the landscaping or the grading around it, we don't know what the grading is going to cost, we, we just roughly estimated about five hundred thousand in the props and the grading around it. There's a few things that we're doing that I'm not sure if the, if the county's doing, I really don't, just did not know, I have not had a chance to talk to them, I've not seen their proposal. So there's things like the pump test thing. Right now, we're going over to Barco County to test our trucks. So we'll be able to test our trucks here, plus we'll have the opportunity to have our sergeants literally go up there and pump water without flowing the city's water off the mains. We can recirculate it to itself, and we'll get better training on the, on the pump operators itself. There's, that's a couple of the key factors that, that we're looking at. When we started looking at these numbers, it was before the county had announced that they were building there. So we already put all of ours together, had it in place, and whatever y'all pleasure is.
Chief, let me ask one question. Don't you think perhaps that the county, if, if we had all of our vehicles out and three miles away, that the county would map inland our mutual aid agreement and all that stuff, don't you think they would pull one or two trucks in, in here to cover this territory while we were all out there?
I don't think they'd pull them in, I, I obviously I can't speak to that, but I'd be chief of the nurse. They, they would come in and back us up, but I don't think they would pull them in. Right now, when they go to training, we cover for them. Like if the Clayton, Clayton Fire Department is in training, we cover for my stations. Now, again, you're looking at the longer response time.
Would it, then-
Look, go ahead.
How's Woodstock going to do it if they're, if they're going to participate? We, we probably need to investigate that, because we do have an opportunity here that could be significant.
Woodstock has got, they got a lot more personnel, a lot more trucks in there. Or when they do joint training, they will be able to send and leave trucks in the city.
But, but would we not, as we build these new stations?
There, there is a possibility that-
Okay. Mr. Cummins and Mr. Bassett?
That was my point, actually, was that, at the point of Woodstock, or comparing to Woodstock, at the point in time we're building this training facility, if we're moving ahead with having four or five stations, we're going to have fifty personnel, we're going to have all these trucks, so we should be able to do the same thing that Woodstock does. In essence, if they've only got two stations, and, I don't know what their number of personnel is, the other thing is, is that we're, we keep aiming at this ISO, and I went to Trudy Patrick, relative to what that really saves citizens, residents, and I said, "Give it to me on my house." The actual difference of a four to a three is around twenty-two dollars a year on my house that I would save. That's the difference. So, you know, we can aim for that, but do we want to spend a million dollars that we're going to have to generate tax revenues from the same people in order to save them twenty-two dollars or less in fire insurance?
No, I told you, excuse me, Mr. Bassett? Then I'll be back.
Thank you. It was mentioned that this county training facility in Woodstock, and they said they'd be more than happy to charge a small fee or a fee, I don't know how much that fee is, but I think that we will have a excellent fire department with these additional stations, and this is just part of the program that we should be looking at, and I think we should stay with what the plan is, and this million dollars is spread out over a period of years, and could be that if you take that million dollars and strike out and find out how much we're going to have to pay to be able to go to somebody else's training facilities, might be just nipples and dimes. So I'd rather have our own control, our own fire department, as all of you will know, and I'd like to leave it in there.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes, sir. I, I would be surprised if we all at least didn't want to, want some further details before we made this decision, all, and that variables in the future are always unknown, we can guess as best as we can, but, but that's what, that's all we have to go on all these. So yes, I would like a much more detailed report and recommendation as well, as we need that. One thing I just want to mention, ironically, I also went to Trudy Patrick about, about the ISO, and, and yes, I, I just wanted to make this point, he, he did explain to me it's a complicated process, it does not necessar, it doesn't recognize city and county boundaries necessarily when insurance companies are rating your home, it, it, so it's true, an ISO of three might save some homes twenty-two dollars, but it may save others to three hundred within the same city. It's all these complicated variables, and, and the bigger the insurance company, according to Trudy, the more complicated it becomes, so, so that's, that's another hugely complicated, but there's no doubt that a three is, is much more safer than a four.
Mr. Mayor?
Present.
I just recently left the insurance business, and fire insurance is one of the things I sold, and Mr. Bryant is absolutely correct, there is so much more, so much more to coming up with what is going to save or not save, believe me, just going in and asking what my house would be from a three to a four, four to a three, is just not adequate, there's just so much more to it. It wasn't the biggest thing, though, it's going to help the commercial people more than it will the residential, it helps commercial. So, I, I would suggest, and I'd like to ask Mr. Wood this, we, we, we've got to get ready to, to be prepared to four bond referendum in March.
Yes, sir.
So when we say we need more details, how are we doing on time schedules?
There's several times when you could take this out. We, we need to pass this in two weeks, so if you don't have sufficient information in two weeks to decide, it's okay, you can pass the resolution. There'll be further resolutions determining the actual bond. If the voters approve it, you then will decide how much to borrow, so you have that chance to change it. And even if, even if the voters approved eight million, and you borrow an eight million, you know, you could still decide not to do it, and then put that extra million back to paying off the debt. So there are plenty of chances to change, but you don't have to decide necessarily in two weeks.
Thank you. Mr. Bassett?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hump has made that last point about commercial, and I think that's a key element, and we had some speakers here this evening that were talking about how to bring business into the city. And once again, in the paper, just today, I think it was, I was sick, and once again, to see that the industrial park down at the end of ninety-two and seventy-five is going to have a brand-new big business come in, build warehouses, they're getting a lot of action. We have an excellent facility on the bus. We continue to lose, we're losing because we're a four, thank goodness we're a four, and if we get to be a three, all of a sudden, that opportunity up there is going to change. And I think it's the important thing to remember, the savings that the commercial industry will save, and us bringing in business, and I think it's a whole package that we're talking about, not just what the residential issue is, the bigger picture is the commercial, and that's multiplier. And I'm glad that the attorney pointed out the fact, and it is the fact, that if we decide after we get more information, and we find out what it's going to be charging, okay, we'll make a decision. But I think what we should do is stick with the number, we've been advertising it, we need to move ahead, the next meeting, have this approved, we've talked about it for months, it's time to take the action, that people have run forward again about council, doesn't move ahead, we're going to move ahead. Thanks, sir.
I, I would just say one thing, Mr. Bassett brought up about the industrial park there in South Cherokee, that is unincorporated Cherokee, and so their rating would be at least as high as ours, maybe higher, as far as ISO.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, anyone else have anything on that issue?
Okay. Okay, we're on F, Charter twenty-two dash thirty-five F, a mayor staff.
Mr. Cummins? Yes, the reason I added that to discussion is I didn't, I could have left it off, and then we would have been faced with a procedural error, but I decided to, to bring that.
then we would've been faced with a procedural error, but I decided to, to bring that in for discussion, uh, so that we are at least, even though everybody knows I'm against the change, uh, at least we're following the procedure that should be followed, and will arrive at a vote. And further points on that, uh, I really believe that the charter amendment should be the very deliberative process, and that we shouldn't be doing these single changes whenever a group of council members just don't like a single provision. I think it's, it lowers the credibility of the charter. I don't think it, I think it treats it with lesser respect than it should. That's my personal opinion. The second problem that I really have is that this is a change in the shift of power from the mayor to the council, and the city manager actually is gaining power that the mayor is losing if you put the, uh, Main Street under that. And therefore, I, I believe that we can success, or can be successfully argued, that the form of government is being changed, and all forms of government change, i.e. moving power from one part of the government to the other part of the government. And any significant change to the city charter, uh, requires the approval of the state legislature, and I think Mr. Dyer will concur that that is the case. Now, he may not agree with that it's a shift of power, but, uh, if it does change the form, it has to go to the state legislature. Uh, the city of Nelson is currently discussing with the state their charter changes, where they have significantly lessened the powers and duties of the mayor, and shifted the power to the council. And they are in discussions, I guess, this meeting with the state legislature that's coming up, as to whether that's the correct thing or not the correct thing was done. So I think even if you do go ahead and approve this, I will not vote for it. If you do go ahead and approve it, it is subject to challenge as to whether or not we have the authority to do that.
Thank you.
Yes. Yes, go ahead.
I think Mr. Cummings and I are thinking along with the same lines. I actually asked Susan to, um, read the motion again, so we could say we had a reading. So if, if I could please yield the floor to her and let her read it, and then if I could repeat again.
I'm just gonna read the one-sentence motion. Therefore, my motion is that we adopt the ordinance to amend the charter to delete section two point three five F only, delete paragraph F only.
Thank you. I have done extensive research on this. I've interviewed city clerks and city managers in eleven of our neighboring cities, and the county as well. So I'm, I'm searched on a personal level with twelve of our neighboring communities, similar to us, and some are similar in size, some are similar in geographic territory. The first thing I want to clarify, and I, obviously, I was not prepared to even speak on this tonight, I just wanted Susan to read it, but based on some of the complete lack of grasp of the truth as to what this is about, I do want to clear this up. Number one, the Main Street director's job, Ms. Ginger Gerard, is not in jeopardy. Her job will not be eliminated with this proposal. I want all the media to please understand that. This is not going to eliminate the Main Street director's job. This is not going to fire Ginger Gerard. The second misconception I would like to clear up is the fact that this is a intentional running off of another city employee, the mayor's assistant, and that I am doing this for some vindictive reason. Starting about maybe three months ago, I started talking to Ms. Fowler about the possibility of this. I researched when she would be vested in retirement, which is January the ninth of twenty thirteen. I met with her on multiple occasions in her office. We were getting along very fine. On one occasion, out in the hallway, she saw me, she did a little dance, see me. We walked in the office and talked about it. She's so excited about upcoming retirement and the fact that we're gonna keep her vested. Um, we've done it, talked several times. I, I tried to do it as respectfully as I possibly could. I, I have sat down with, with you, Mr. Mayor, briefly in your office, and offered to share with you every shred of documentation that I have justifying this proposal. I have simply laid out the facts of how a council manager form of government is to be organized, according to the Georgia Municipal Association guidelines and organizational charts. We are a council manager form of government. We are not organized in accordance with the Georgia Municipal Association guidelines. No cities that I interviewed anywhere close to our size allow for mayor staff, not even Cherokee County. I personally spoke with Buzz Aron's Tuesday morning. I said, Buzz, tell me who all your staff is. He says, I don't have any staff. I said, tell me who your administrative support is. He says, between the five elected officials, commission chair, the four commissioners, and Jared Cooper, the county manager, there is one person, one administrative assistant. She's Jared Cooper's administrative assistant. When Buzz and the four commissioners need assistance, she is their assistant as well. One person. And he told me in no uncertain terms, he said, I want you to make that very clear. Cherokee County elected officials share one administrative assistant person with the county manager. And I found that time and time again to be true in other cities I interviewed. I, I had not intended to go through them tonight, and I won't, 'cause we're short on time. But I will tell you, uh, the closest city to our size that I found that had mayor staff and had our form of government is Johns Creek, population seventy-eight thousand, median household income one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The city with the government structure was set up by the infamous Marie Garrett, as the old timers are all familiar with. She also set up our mayor staff structure years ago, before any of us were here. The next one I found was the city of Rawlsville, ninety thousand population, six hundred-plus employees, four full-time legal staff on staff, no way, any shape, or form comparison to us, except they're geographically close. Their, their mayor has a, has an administrative assistant. That's, that's also shared by the council. Again, if anyone out here wants to see any of this documentation, I've got all of it. And again, I, I regret that we've had to make this such a spectacle and unpleasant experience. I, I really had hoped that, that Gene and I could come to some kind of an agreement on this. Again, all I've done is just laid out the facts to the council members, independent decision-makers. I have not in any way, shape, or form tried to change somebody's mind or lobby. I couldn't anyway. These are intelligent, accomplished men up here, all of us. Me, I'm not gonna be able to change somebody's mind with a bunch of cussing bull. These, we make decisions based on facts. And I want to leave you with one other thought. Gene, you've never done anything to hurt me, or to be vindictive, or ugly to me. I have no reason to be angry, mad, or vindictive towards you. You and I have agreed on most issues, we've gotten along on most issues, and I pray that we can get past this one, and, and I am certain that between our city clerk and our city manager's administrative assistant, you will have the assistance you need, and, and just like all of these other mayors do. I am not in any way trying to strip you of power or, or any of that. It's not the intent. It's just to bring us in conformance, number one, with the Georgia Municipal Association guidelines for how cities are organized, and, and number two, it will create an additional sixty-four-plus thousand dollars that can be used in any number of things. My proposal is going to be to establish an economic development office, which is what Woodstock has, Cherokee County has, all the successful cities that we're always pointing to have. That person in Woodstock was Billy Peppers. That is the person that brings all these things together. We've heard a lot of talk out here from our audience about lack of vision, lack of coordination, lack of, of, um, of planning. All these wonderful things have been mentioned. That's because we have, we lack a person to do that. Our Main Street, um, director has a certain job to do, and that's focus on Main Street and downtown. And that's what Ms. Gerard does. She does her job. But a director of economic development goes for the whole city. Ms. Gerard would be under this person. Her focus would be downtown Canton. Her office would be downtown Canton, where her job is. She could be connected to City Hall with all kind of computers. Her office would be like a mini Chamber of Commerce. It would be wonderful, right on Main Street, just like Woodstock does it. Their downtown people and their development, economic development direction office is downtown, and it's a Main Street address. That is what it's going to take to truly bring prosperity to this city in terms of economic development, is leadership in that area, vision in that area. And, and I'll close with one, one thing. I, I wanna, Mr. Mayor, if I can deviate and look at Ms. Gerard, I'm gonna offer her an apology. Is that okay with you, if I face her?
I think it's due.
Ms. Gerard, if I have said anything, or written anything to you that is disrespectful, I apologize for that. Most of my comments directed to you have been critical, but in a constructive way. Some of it has been harsh, and I'm, I'm sorry about that, but that's just the way I am. I, I do believe you have done a, a fine job with what we have had to work with downtown, and I hope that you're able to stay with us if we decide to, to move your office to a different location and to move you under other supervision.
Thank you, Mayor. I try, I try to be short. First of all, I'd like to give some kudos to a man that's taken some, some real weapons. Uh, Mr. Bryan has done an awful lot of study. He's done his due diligence on this, on this issue. And on the other side, there's been a lot of emotion, which is very, very understandable. But the due diligence is there, the facts are there. We have to be able to run our, our, our government the most efficient way, at the better use of our dollars. I think we talked about that briefly, uh, earlier. I, I do, I do believe that by doing this, we are gonna be more efficient, and I do believe we can do this, Mr. Mayor, without any loss to your, to your office. Uh, over the years, and most everybody, I guess, in the audience as well as that sits up here, have gone through these restructuring. As technology has improved, so our communications to our internal customers, as well as our external customers, is as good, if not better, than what it once was. But it's, it's a gradual transition from the way we used to do things to the way we can do things with modern technology that helps us to be able to run and achieve our goals with less, I wanna, I wanna say less money, but better use of the monies that we have. And if we can save sixty-plus thousand dollars, and I don't use the word, I should not have used the word save, if we can redistribute the sixty thousand dollars to more fire people, more, uh, streets, uh, people, because that, uh, work is getting greater there, uh, that's, that's what we're trying to do. And Mr. Bryan has done a lot of due diligence to make sure that we're not making a decision foolishly. And I, I think a good comparison is right across town here at the county, where they got ten times the population, ten times the space, and they do it far more efficiently than, than us. To say that we're doing it for an individual, it's not true.
Mr. Mayor, one last point, if I may make it. I don't disagree with a lot that Mr. Bryan just said. In fact, I agree with, I agree with a lot of what Mr. Huffman just said. The basic issue is every bit of what they just said can be accomplished without modifying the charter. Every bit of that that they're talking about, we can do without making a charter modification. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I would, I would just be glad to explain.
Let, let him explain if you don't mind.
You want me to explain it?
How do you do it without modifying the?
The charter?
Yeah.
It's a very simple thing. All I have to do is bring forward to this council a budget amendment and reallocate the funds.
Thank you.
Let me, uh, let me make a comment here, uh, based on what you did, some things that you had said, particularly that, uh, relative to our organization. I think basically what you said verified that we are not organized like, uh, some other cities. We, we have a different form of government right now. So this plays to the, uh, position Mr. Cummings took, that anytime you change, make a significant change to the charter, particularly with respect to form, it is required that you go through the legislature. Now, uh, every city is different in many, many respects, but what we have is, is a unique form right now. And secondly, we talk about economic, using this money for an economic development director. You know, that's all well and good, but if you remember, I believe you were, you were here when we let the last one go. We had one, you know? And, uh, and my guess is that one was making at least probably as much as this was, uh, this board is making. But anyway, um, did you have something, do you have something else? I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Dyer, I'm gonna put you on the spot a minute. You may not connect him, but what form of government does the city of Canton employ, and who dictates what form of government the city of Canton employs?
The answer to the question of what form is, we don't have a pure form of any of them. It's basically council manager. But when you say the mayor is executive, chief executive, it's not a pure council manager form. For the city of Rome, the mayor is elected among the council. That's a pure council manager form, that the mayor is, is only the chairman of, of the board. So we, we have a hybrid, which is what most cities have. The GMA book lead says so. Nobody has a pure council, but it's essentially council manager. Now, the question about the form of government, I, I, you know, I do disagree, because our case law says you can take away the mayor, the, the chief executive's ability to hire and fire, but we don't even really have to get there, because this power was added by ordinance in two thousand and five. So if it was added by ordinance, it could be taken away by ordinance.
If it was added by ordinance incorrectly?
Then you don't have the power.
Two wrongs make a right?
Then you don't have the power. If it was added incorrectly, you don't have the power.
Well, that may be true.
It was done in a charter amendment in two thousand and five, which was a total charter rewrite that was voted on by ordinance. That's when that power was put in.
Carson probably passed statute of limitations on that.
Well, that's not, well, that's not my point. My point was, if we're talking form of government, the form of government was created by ordinance.
But again, my point is, we don't have to go through all these charter modifications to accomplish the same thing.
That's why we made the change to the charter we made this summer. I agree with you on that.
Exactly.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, I would agree with Mr. Cummings that we can make the changes for now with this, but that would be a half- that would be a half-baked, halfway way to do it and still leave it open for debate and issues later on down the road. If, if the majority of us agrees that we are going to, to organize our government along the GMA recommended form of government, form of council manager form, which is what has been stated that we have a version of, again, you can look at the GMA organization chart. And why not just do like the successful cities do and do it the right way and then not have to, have to pull with it anymore?
I'd agree with that. But. I'd agree with, but you're only changing one thing, and there may be fourteen other things before we get to that pure form. And what are we gonna do? Do this every single month? Are we gonna be looking and changing this next paragraph two months from now and then two months again later? Accomplish the objective you want to accomplish. Even though I disagree with it, you can accomplish it as a council or whatever. And secondly, if you find that there's things that this council wants to change in total in the charter to bring it to a, a more pure form, then address that over a period of time and look at each one and substantiate it the way a committee did, spending eighteen months to arrive at what we got. That's all I'm asking for.
Yes, sir. And I, I, I hope this will be the last one, but the, it's our job to correct what we perceive the majority of us as deficiencies in the charter. We're authorized to do that. We all know that when we agreed on the charter changes last summer, we all know there were still deficiencies. It still doesn't match things in the code, and the code doesn't match things in the charter. We, it's, it's a work in progress. It's, it's never, it's gotta change to meet the conditions. It should not be taken lightly and should not be done without a lot of due diligence and research, which we have done and are still in the process of doing. If somebody next year doesn't like the way we changed it, they will change it back. That's what happens in governments. It's, it's floating and edging, it's flexible. It's, is a big deal in a way, but it's not a big deal in another way. If, if you're talking about just technicalities, it's, it's really the right thing to do is do it right and do it now.
Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would, uh, ask Councilman Cummings to buckle up his seatbelt because he has brought some very interesting food for thought in regards to this, and I appreciate that. And I think that's something we should dialogue on, look at. And we'll have the opportunity in the next couple of days, week, whatever. By no means are we going to get together in the cave with the candles and do a clandestine. We will be communicating back and forth amongst ourselves, but thank you, sir. And I know it's a shock.
There's gonna be a lot more discussion on this before this is accomplished. And, and you know, I, there are, there are ways, I think, to deal with this situation. And some of them aren't the best ways in the world to deal with things. But somehow, sometimes they have to be, you know, they have to deal with it that way. I, I simply think that to pick out that individual in that position, when I could name several others, which I will not tonight, that if it's about, quote, saving or reallocating money, there's other places there that I think you would go to long before you ever got to that.
Wait a second. That's not fair. You're talking about neither?
I'll give you a check.
If you've got other places you think that you can do that, it's your responsibility to do it. So please do it, and I'd love to see the list.
Give me the authority to do that, please.
Just bring us the list.
Just give me the authority. I'll take care of it.
You bring us the list, and we'll take care of it.
Well, you probably won't agree with it, I wouldn't think.
We just have the opportunity.
I do think it has been a, a good point tonight that we were, uh, actually have, have, have given some thought to the form of government here that we have. And I think that is a, a very, very good point, and that to make those changes may be, uh, may, may be difficult. And certainly possibly subject to challenge without any doubt. So what I'm, what I'm saying is, we, we'll have a lot more discussion on this before the, uh, decision, decisions are made, final decisions made. Anyone else?
One G.
Okay. Let's go ahead. Uh, let's see, where are we now? We deleted that one. Soil erosion ordinance amendment.
Mr. Mayor, you have Main Street, something about Main Street.
Sorry about that. Sorry about that. Go ahead.
No, I don't know.
Who was the bill? Okay, pedestrian lights.
Last night at the DDA social, a, um, very prominent downtown merchant, long-term merchant, lifetime resident approached me and wanted to know why we hadn't turned the pedestrian lights back on. As y'all know, we, we've got half of every other one of them off up and down the street. So I promised him that I would request that the council give its approval to turn those lights back on. It's Christmas time. We've, we've made our point about saving money. We're in a so much better financial shape than we were when, when we, um, turned those off. It's, it's not gonna make a huge difference one way or the other. Let's, if, if we could deviate somehow tonight and take a vote to either approve or disapprove this so they can be turned on for the remainder of this season, it would be my request. So at this time, I'm gonna make a motion that we turn those lights back on.
Yeah. He's coming back, though. I think he probably already hears that. Because what we're doing is twelve thousand, or probably a twelve thousand five hundred dollar a year expenditure, is what we're, we're, we're asking. Yes, or just for the holidays, just for the electricity. Are you talking about turning them off after Christmas?
I'm talking about turning them on from now on, and we can always turn them back off after, after the holidays if we need to do that.
Now, this is probably, I, I can't remember exactly when, probably within the last year anyway, and, and the council, you know, I brought it to their attention because I had someone at a certain location ask me if we were going to turn them back on or whatever. And I brought it back on, and the council at that point, at that point, decided to leave them off.
I'd like to speak to that if I could. I have a son and a daughter both have a house on Main Street, and I will agree, there are some dark spots along that street. In fact, if you're walking at night, which many of us do, um, you're out to turn an ankle or, or some of our sidewalks are cracked, things of that nature, there's some dark spots that someone could, you know, if they wanted to hide, they could. So it's just a little bit scary. But, um, I know that we have someone that's approached Mr. Wood about saving some money for the city, turning all those lights back on, and I'd like for him to, in the future, approach us about that. I think the way he, the way he explained it was that he could actually turn on all those lights for the same amount of what was turned on at this time. So I just want to throw that out for food for thought, but I am for turning them back on.
Okay. Anyone else?
I'd just like, what's the term, whether we're gonna turn them on permanently or just for the remainder of the holiday season?
The motion I made is to turn them on permanently, but with the, the just added verbiage that we can turn them back off anytime. We can also consider this proposal. I totally forgot about that. I remember there's a proposal been put out to us to replace all the bulbs, and the documentation is there that it'll cost half the electricity. Therefore, we can turn the other half on, and it'll be a zero difference. But my motion is to turn them back on now permanently, and again, we can change it next month if you want to.
Okay, we have, I'm just pulling order here. We are in a work session. So what we'd have to do is go through.
Emergencies.
Emergencies, because we're talking a limited amount of time before the season's over. And I have no problem with the motion, but I need to ask the council to say that we can have this motion brought forward, and then we can vote on it. Is that correct?
That would be, that would be my opinion, yeah. I.
So then I'm making a motion that with, the question is.
That it's an emergency.
It's the pleasure of the council to accept this motion. Need a second.
Yeah, a second, that this is an emergency to turn those streetlights on. And the motion is set. Of course, I understand that, uh, I've, I've got, I, my, my feeling, as you know, is that it's not an emergency. I'm not opposed to turning the streetlights on. I am opposed to making an emergency out of something that's not.
Mr. Mayor.
You're very agreeable.
Mr. Mayor, just, just an additional thing. We had an infamous nodding of the head when it came down to give Mr. Wood the permission because Christmas was coming upon us very fast, and we needed to take an action step, and we all sat there and nodded our heads. And then at the next meeting, we voted for the Christmas lights, and we were basically doing something wrong. But we got it proved because we nodded our heads. Now, I'm trying to keep this thing in the proper perspective. I have that motion on the floor. Do we accept this as an emergency or not?
Mr. Mayor, the original concept behind the work session and the voting session being separated was to allow significant time for the citizens of this city to have an opportunity to express their wishes relative to major issues. And I don't think this is a major issue that we want to vote, that it's an emergency to do it. So I'd rather just, we just vote to do it on minor issues, and I think anything of significance has to go through the work session and the voting session. But if we're gonna sit here and not be able to do little things that solicit, that wouldn't solicit any citizen dispute, then we're sort of ineffective.
I'd say that was, personally, you know, I think that's an expenditure that our city manager can make if it's not more than twenty-five dollars, because he did not do that.
Yes, that's right. We're sure gonna vote the council to do it.
No, you don't need, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna say something, and, and I hope this will be taken in, in a very respectful context, that this is an example of, is cutting those streetlights on really a policy decision? Should it, should it have been a policy decision in the first place? The reason it's coming back up for a vote discussion now is because in the first place, council voted on turning off the streetlight. And I can just encourage y'all to think about that in the future. You set yourself up for these kinds of ongoing debates, to vote, to take off a streetlight off the streetlight inventory, or putting one on the streetlight inventory, and I, I, I just wonder if there's not a better way to handle that without it becoming such a pass, such a, such a passionate legislative matter at nine o'clock at night.
Listen, Mayor, I'd like to, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to request everybody withdraw whatever motions we got on the floor. I'll let Mr. Wood decide whether or not the lights go on or don't go on.
I would throw my motion as long as it's got terms of that government. I think Mr. Wood, motion Mr. Wood ought to be chief of lights.
As long as it's not more than twenty thousand, I think he is. All right. May I have that settled now?
The record is all motions are withdrawn.
Yes.
May I just say something for informational purposes that will become a policy issue because it will become a budget issue in all likelihood, and now perhaps a good time to mention it. We have learned recently that, um, the, uh, the lights at exit nineteen, five seventy-five and, and exit nineteen, the city has not been being built for those lights since they were installed a number of years ago. And it's likely that, uh, that in the very near future, we will begin being built for those lights. We have appealed to Georgia Power, Nathan Ingram has, uh, we discussed the matter out several, several days ago. We've appealed to Georgia Power since they've been absorbing that cost, or somebody's been absorbing it, the city hasn't, to give us some grace period, at least until the beginning of our next fiscal year, so that we can anticipate that in the budget rather than being, uh, forced to incur it in the middle of a budget year. But that issue's not yet resolved, but I, I do want you to be aware that it is out there.
Are you talking about the streetlights? Are you talking about traffic signal lights?
A big, a big, a big.
Big lights?
Big lights.
We need to turn every other one off.
I just want you to be aware that issue is out there. Okay. We ready to go to the next, uh, discussion of soil erosion ordinance amendment.
I think our, I think our briefing, superior layers, is hopefully adequate.
Anybody have any questions on that?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to put that sentence to the end of the meeting.
Okay? Anyone have any objection to that? They do, when the meeting comes next, uh, on the twentieth, we can pull it off. Good. Edouard River, a new launch budget amendment.
This is largely a pass-through. Um, we just, uh, we received that twenty-five thousand dollars, and, uh, and we need to, uh, appropriate it within the budget. It's just a budget amendment. It's largely a pass-through.
Is that agenda okay? Discussion on city's scrap metal. Anyone have any comment, anything you want to say on that? Is that agenda okay? And I believe we, we, uh, we'll go to the city manager's report. Anything else?
No, just two things, real quickly. Um, complimenting Mr. Hattigan on pulling together a meeting with, uh, Mr. Wayne Jackson, who is the EPD representative, state EPD representative, who is, uh, the person who gives us authority to, uh, to, to cancel boil water notice advisories or, or notices. Cold weather's obviously coming up, I presume. Can't tell it today, but I think it's, I mean, that is usually when we have historically had more of our main, water main breaks and exclusively, but primarily. And so they pulled together yesterday a meeting with a number of our water and sewer folks, both our contractors and our internal people, to be absolutely certain that we know exactly what the right procedure is and what the requirements are from the state, uh, when, when it becomes necessary for us to issue those notices. And I appreciate him and Joby West both pulling that together. Uh, we're continuing to work on the GFA grant relative to the sewer plant. We'll keep posted on that. I think, uh, within the next thirty or so days, we will have an update on the design from InfraTech, and, and we'll try to have that on an upcoming agenda as well. As I mentioned earlier in the discussion, our ISO, we evaluate towards end of day, and we do expect to, uh, to get our ISO rating update within the next six months.
There's one, one other I'd like to ask Joby, and, and we talked about this earlier, and it's, I want to do it now because I'll forget about it between now and tomorrow. Uh, either, either if, if you know now, fine. If not, at our next meeting, I'd like a, uh, a clarification as to when, uh, someone who is not on sewer now but on septic tank has to pay a sewer bill. You want to look that up, or you want to tell me now? We talked about this once before, and I don't remember the end result.
I'm finding conflicting information. I want to look it up, and I'll, and I'll run your report on it in more.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Yeah.
Okay.
Last night, or Tuesday night, I attended a county commission meeting. Been a long time since I've attended one, and I was there. What I want to bring out is, they conducted a meeting, went through their total agenda, included the public input, in fifty-five minutes. Um, you know, it's, it was precise, it's to the point, they had people there, not, and about what we have right now, maybe, at the county meeting. But we used to have those type meetings here, and I asked them, I said, well, you know, how do you, how do you perform that? Because our meeting right now is going to be about three hours tonight. We've had four and a half hour meetings, and sometimes things get lost, and sometimes people get tired, and tempers flare, and things are said, and, you know, it doesn't look.
people get tired, the tempers flare, things are said, you know, it doesn't look the best for us. And they said, well, what they do is what we used to do. They have a meeting before their meeting that they come out to. And I would like to suggest that we look at doing that because during the week, the city manager, I mean, the county manager told me what they do during the week is that everybody has looked at the agenda, they have a question, they send it to him, he tries to get the answers to it, they meet about, actually, he told me an hour, maybe an hour and a half before the meeting. They iron out all the different things, and they only talk about the policies and the items on the agenda. They don't sit here and talk about the municipal stuff that we do, and they get the job done. My point is that it brings in more people to the meeting, we aren't wasting their time, and we're getting, we're going to be getting the city's job done precisely and going on with what else we need to do rather than having a three-hour or four-and-a-half-hour meeting, which we might as well have.
It'd have to be a public, open meeting.
Oh, yeah, that's a good one. I don't understand, if they have a prior meeting...
We had a prior meeting.
It's a work session, they start at three o'clock in the afternoon, and then at six o'clock, I believe it is, they have their regular...
Is this not a work session?
No, it is a work session.
So we're having our work session right now. So we can have a meeting starting now.
No, no, you'd have a meeting.
It still be long.
Well, believe me, it works for them, and it works every week, every month, I mean, and it used to work for us.
I talked to Commissioner Johnson last night. He's telling me he's got to come home from work early because he's got to be over at three o'clock for, obviously, the work session.
Well, that may be, but that's a one time a month meeting, and it's not, they're not meeting twice a month.
I believe they didn't meet twice.
Do they? They told me once, so I, you know, I wouldn't...
I'm not sure.
But anyway, regardless, their meetings that the public comes to, they don't have to listen for four hours, and I guess that's what I wanted to do.
Others would have to be invited.
Well, they're invited.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
The Civil Board does the same thing. They have their pre-work session, so that's something we...
Well, I just think it would get more public invite involved.
Okay.
I'd like you to say some profound statement, just Mary's report.
I think I've said enough for now, there's more later.
Okay.
A lot more later.
I appreciate that. First of all, I feel a renewed spirit of this council meeting, the discussion and debate. It was a good one tonight. We did debate quite a bit in the work session.
I believe that's on the agenda, Mr. Bush.
I realize that, and that's the reason I beg for your indulgence. Secondly, I want to thank the public and the citizens for coming forward and communicating with the council. And also, I want to thank the public for their maintaining the quorum. Appreciate it very much.
Anyone else?